The regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for the township of Bellville on September 3rd, 2015 will now come to order. Clerk Colerone.
Caruso, Gianna, Mafucci, Lamana, Sheldon, Milano, Delversi.
Here. Everybody please slap a stamp for a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, has notice of this meeting been given in the voice from sunshine law?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before we go on, we have to move a member up to a regular member and the dual devolts will be given. I think it's a balance of a term, I think it's a three-year term. Mr. Mafucci.
Stand up and repeat after me, aye, and state your name.
Aye, Mr. Mafucci.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Aye, and then state your name. In further solemnly swear.
In further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Bellville Zoning Board of Adjustment.
The Bellville Zoning Board of Adjustment.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Everybody reviewed their packet the minutes from last month's meeting? Anybody want to make any corrections, additions, contractions? Motion made by Mr. Caruso to accept without any changes?
No changes.
No changes, everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Second please. Seconded by Mr. Bottamott, Clerk Colerone.
Caruso, Gianna, Mafucci, Lamana, Sheldon, Milano, Delversi.
Yes. Okay, applications for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I represent 78 Rutgers Street LLC, and I request that before that motion is expected would be reached tonight, that it be adjourned.
Okay, anything else?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
You're a bellwether, you?
Yes, I do.
You want to hear that tonight?
If it gets reached, I expect it's third on the agenda.
Right.
Well, and if, at some point, I may ask to adjourn it, but at this moment, I'll leave it on.
So right now, you're only, okay, you're only doing Rutgers, all right. Okay, anybody in the audience that's here for ZB 2015-17, that's 78 Rutgers Street Limited Liability Corporation Owner, but for 236-238 Washington Avenue? The applicant is proposing to construct an archery range of four booths in the basement of the building. That will be adjourned to our next meeting on October 1st, there will be no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper. I assume you did the notices?
I did, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay. All right, then the first case on the agenda will be heard, that we know resolutions to be memorialized tonight. And that is a continuation of case ZB 2014-08, 138-146 Brighton Avenue. That is, the applicant is proposing to renovate existing apartment complex to add eight additional one-bedroom units to the existing 33 units. The additional eight units will be located on the lower level. Mr. Gachion, this is your case.
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, as you know, I represent Brighton Gardens. There have been a number of hearings, and all of my witnesses have testified. We're back this evening with regard to a minor change in square footage because of encroachment on the Morris Canal property, which has now been eliminated. My client requested that I write to the governing body to see if they would be willing to lease this small portion in order to avoid the necessity for a minor change in the plan. The governing body, I understand, was not interested, so we made the change and submitted that information. The only witness I will present this evening is Mario Iannelli, the site engineer. He will review the changes to the plan because of the removal of the encroachment on Morris Canal. That has been eliminated. I'd like to call Mr. Iannelli back to the stand, he has been to the witness stand probably on two or three other occasions with regards to his case.
Okay. Mr. Iannelli, you understand you're still under oath?
Yes.
And did you state your name and spare your last name to the record?
Mario Iannelli, I-A-N-N-E-L-L-I.
And you, you still licensed last June?
Yes.
Mr. Iannelli, as a result of the 400-plus square foot encroachment onto the Morris Canal, which has been removed, did you prepare an amended plan?
Yes.
And did you submit that survey that you took that plan from and the plan to Mr. Harris's office?
Yes.
And can you please review for the benefit of the board and the interested citizens the changes which resulted from the elimination of that 400-plus square foot that was encroaching on the Morris Canal property?
Yes, I can.
Let's mark this, I think we're up to A9, I believe.
Just put today's date as a precaution.
Today's day, September 3rd, and I believe we have the amended surveys, we don't have the color.
Can you put it further back over the wall, please?
I got a couple of reports I want to grab.
The chairman asked you to move it back a little bit, Mr. Iannelli, towards the door.
So that way the public is better? Not that old yet. Okay, hi, Howard. I just marked this exhibit A9 dated 9/3/2015. Basically, what I've done is blown up the back, or enlarged the back of the site, just to go over the changes that were proposed as part of the reduction to accommodate the Morris Canal. Basically, we adjusted the, if you remember, the last time we testified, there was a plan provided to us by the town that had a triangle wedge that was removed from that area. That was me.
That's not mine. I would please advise everyone to please turn off their cell phones or at least put them on vibration.
It's not mine, I turned mine off, but it wasn't mine, it's still going on.
Iannelli, go ahead and proceed, please.
I'm referring here to exhibit A3, this is where we removed a small area, triangle shape, that was based on a plan that was provided by the township. Since then, we, based on the updated survey, it's basically, the revisions occurred in the same area, roughly encroached about 480 square feet further into the site. So what we did is we're proposing to remove the asphalt from that area as part of this plan, construct a concrete curb along that line, plant.
Are you going to move the fence?
No, we're not, I'll explain to you why.
Okay.
Okay. The concrete curb, and we still can maintain vehicular access around the site. The closest area will be 10-foot wide. And to jump to the question that you had asked, one of the reasons why we do not want to remove the fence, the fence runs along this back line here. If we remove the fence, you're going to create gaps in the adjacent property owner. Right now, I have photos, photos I'll show to you. Oh, no, I'm not jumping out again. No, I'm coming up, but. I'll mark this as A10.
Yes. To indicate what they are.
Yes. This is a board, exhibit 810, a photograph that I took, I believe it was last fall or last winter. What you can see here, right now, this area here in this photo, photo number two, you're looking, the building's on your left, you're looking down across the Morris Canal, and the property behind us is, you can see in the foreground. Now, that would be on an aerial, referring to A1, we're looking this way, okay? Photo 3 is on the site, about where this truck is parked in the aerial, looking back. And photo 1 is looking back towards the truck. Now, one of the issues or concerns I had with removing this fence, as you can see, there is parking adjacent for that, I believe it's a kiting hall that's in the Morris Canal that the fence provides a barrier for. If you look on photo 2, there's a fence, and there's people's backyards, there's a shed right there, so if I remove that fence, you're going to be able to walk right from the parking lot to the person's backyard, so.
That's not our concern. That's not us. Morris Canal is owned by the town, that's their concern, not ours. And you shouldn't be planting anything on the Morris Canal, because that's not your problem.
We're just trying to enhance the buffer, we don't have to plant there.
Well, all I'm saying is you should move the fence, because you don't belong there anyway.
Okay.
You want to take the asphalt out, move the fence.
We have no objection to moving the fence, we thought it would be beneficial to the neighbors to leave the fence, and that's all.
No, that's town property, and that's up to the town to worry about.
Okay. So, with, back to A9, we have a concrete curb that we're proposing, now you want us to relocate the fence along that curb to the boundary.
I want to be clear.
Come on.
We don't make that decision, whether we should or not.
Right here.
I'm sorry?
Right here.
Can I, I, I think that decision or what they prefer, we may have got a, got a, got a.
Mr. Milano, we had a delay in this case, this case is from last October, because the town complained that he was using a part of the Morris Canal's party application. So the town complains.
And again, I want to be clear, I'm not telling him to move the fence, right? That would be the town's position to say whether you can't plant there or you can't move the fence.
Technically, he's still using the property if he doesn't move it.
I'm not arguing that, but that's not, I don't think this is valid.
We think it's our problem, too, maybe you don't, but he thinks it, I think it.
That's right.
It's our problem.
That's not.
We want some move.
No, it's not our fault.
Okay, you think so, that's your decision.
My client will do whichever, my client thinks in the best interest of the neighbors to leave it where it is, we'd be happy to move the fence.
Okay.
And therefore not put the greenery there.
But if, if it's not on your client's property, he's going, we can order whatever we want, or we can suggest whatever we want.
Suggest.
It's not on his property, and if he needs town approval to do that.
That's right.
He does, if he needs town approval, then we don't have the authority.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just saying, it's not his property. But well, we can put, depending on the result of this case, if the board says we'd like you to move it, we'll make that suggestion, and he has to go and find the proper authority to assist it.
If my client wants to do that.
The reason I brought this up is because, as he mentioned at the beginning, he stated they asked the town to lease that property to him. The town refused, so since the town refused, it can't be part of the application.
It's not meant to be part of the application.
Well, then he should be using it then.
It's just, we're just trying to accommodate the neighbors. I have no problem, we will move it.
Thank you.
Mr. Sir.
I just want to say, I think the reason why he's landscaping it is so that it doesn't get used for parking or anything, so that once it's curved and it's landscaped, he, his intent was to leave it.
Mr. Harris, not to interrupt you, but once the fence is moved, he can't use it either. Thank you, end of discussion, unless somebody else has something to say.
I, I, I just, 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 I. I'm not including a problem.
No, no, we pull it at the end. Fair enough.
I'm writing pro, for them to have that discussion, with the town and not with this board.
Correct.
I agree that this, it shouldn't be part of this application, whether they put a fence or greenery, it's not with this board, you're right, it's not part of the application, period. But what they do moving forward, whether it's a fence or have you, that's, that's not our.
You're keeping it part of the application by him recommending about putting greenery.
Mr. Chairman, we're not doing that, we're using square footage, consistent with that, everything's calculated based on that reduced square footage. Many a time, I have did before boards, where greenery has been put on other people's property to benefit adjacent property owners, that's not out of your.
But that's up to the town if they want to allow it, not us. The town, you recommended leasing it, they said no, so the decision's already been made by the town, so it shouldn't be involved in this application at all.
And it is not involved in this, it's not part of this application. If you're insisting on a fence being put at that location.
No, I'm insisting on the fence being put where the boundary is.
We can put the fence.
Not on artificial boundary.
I already said, the fence would be moved if that was the board's requirement.
Okay.
Again, I explained why I think it's beneficial to leave it where it is, but we will move it. I don't think that benefits anybody by us moving it, but we will.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
Basically, those are the changes, now we have to change plans obviously based on the comments that you've made about moving the fence back, which we will, and remove the landscaping, which we will.
Well, landscaping's not in there, that was wanting to be put in, is that correct?
Correct, meaning remove all the plants.
Correct. The new plan I had, the new survey, I didn't have any landscaping.
That's correct.
Oh.
We're going to remove some of the plants.
That's a, that's a survey, there's a difference between the survey and the plant.
Well, I also have the plants, I didn't see it on here, it could be on the landscape plant.
It is, yes.
Yes, what's the question?
How many parking plants do I do?
We're not losing any parking spaces from what we originally proposed, 64.
You have parking space there at all times.
And we were able to adjust the locations of the parking spaces, it was, it's not that big of a change, if you look at A3, this is how we had it before, it's not that big of a change in the corner. It was more of a change actually along the line, it was almost exactly the same.
Another problem, that, where the property comes to the end of the building, you only have 10 feet, right?
You have 10.1 feet.
I think the zoning ordinance of Bellville is 12 feet.
Or.
For driveway.
That's.
That's like a driveway area.
Well, we can swear in Mr. DiLorenzo, and you can answer that.
Actually, I guess I first, I have a, I can.
Who's DiLorenzo? Chairman, what's DiLorenzo?
Because it's a town construction provision.
I think Frank was more in the.
Oh, I'm just saying, I don't know if we get to do it every night. Okay, yes, yeah, he's here. Frank, what's the story on this?
What is it, what's he talking about, 10 feet where the building ends in the?
Where the driveway or where the car turns around.
Mm-hmm, it's, it's an access, I believe. I think it's, you can go 10 feet on that, 10 to 16 feet on a driveway.
Okay, so what you're saying is the 10 feet's allowed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else?
Anything further in your explanation of what's been done with regard to the reduction in the 400-plus square feet?
That's really all the changes. The, we did relocate the drainage, it was a proposed drainage structure, we moved it out, we moved it onto our site. We are going to grade that area, clean it up, because we have to make sure it drains properly, we don't want to trap water, okay? And with respect to the variances, actually, the variances changed very little, because 480 more square feet of there, the house was removed. So the, the variances changed, no new variances were created, but the actual measurements associated with the variances changed ever so slightly. For instance, the proposed density before was 41 units per acre, now it's 41.5. So it's a very minor adjustment, because when we take the area that was reduced, and then we divide that area into the units, it just reduces ever so slightly.
And 12 is allowed.
That is correct.
Okay. Anything else?
12 is allowed under the ordinance, the 33 is allowed based on variance.
The variance that was granted years ago.
That's correct.
Yes. Okay, so anybody have questions of the witness by members of the board? Any members of the public have questions? Yes, name and address, please. Name and address, please. Can you come up, Mr. Frank Antonio, please? We're going to ask anybody who wants to talk to come up, so we can all hear.
Mr. Frank Antonio, 129 La Park de Quil. Mr. Iannelli, I have here a site layout and dimensional control plan dated July 14th, 2014, with your name on it, did you prepare this?
The site layout plan, yes.
Okay. Is, this correct, you also show dotted line that originally this parcel was two lots, that were combined at some time around.
That was part of the survey that was prepared, correct?
All right. Now, when you drew this site plan, did you rely on the survey?
Yes.
Did you check the survey to the deed?
I am not a surveyor, I cannot comment on how the survey was prepared, but I know that the surveyor, the licensed surveyor in my office prepared it, and provided it to us, and I know he is available, I guess.
Well, then, there's a question. When, then you prepared this plan based on this survey that.
Based on what survey, please identify the date of the survey you're having your hands.
I date, I said July 14th, 2014, and it's called the Site Layout and Dimensional Control Plan, C101, project number 50065638.
What, Mr. Iannelli, the plan that you have in front of you at the present time.
Yes.
What survey was that based on, and when was that survey done?
Survey was, was prepared and updated and submitted with the last submission in August.
So it was 2015 survey, am I correct?
Yes.
This plan is based on, yes.
August 24th, if you'll excuse me.
Was that the, well, one of the surveys that we got was dated July 21st, 2015, that we got through OPR, one of the, and I, and by the way, I just want to thank the board for putting all this information online, because now the public can get it a little more readily. But I just want to verify that you based this on, on the survey.
Correct. Which survey? The 2015, you're referring to the 2014 survey, this is based on the 2015 survey.
Okay, thank you. So it's based on the 2015 survey, is that what you're saying? Yes, that's the one. That's the one I'm talking about, thank you for.
Did you say it was 2014, that's all I'm trying to.
Because I'm trying to finish up, and you keep interrupting me, and you're a very good learner, you know, we're all friends, right? Mr. Gachion, so you keep interrupting me and trying to confuse me, but I've confused you in the past also, so let me finish my question of him. You are not the engineer, Mr. Iannelli is.
If I have the attorney, I can object and make sure to correct information.
Please grant me the respect to finish my question.
So that way we don't have a barrel confusion.
Yes. So now, you submitted this, on this, which I just gave all the, the names and the credits of what you're referring to. On this, does this say that the survey shows 220.44 feet?
Yes.
Does it also say underneath it that the deed says 203 feet?
Yes.
Okay. At that point, and may I approach my question? Right. What is your calculation of the debt along that property line to that point there?
Obviously, I object.
Again, you're not the witness, you're not the witness.
Wait, 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 what's the other?
He didn't even answer.
Wait a minute, let me hear what his objection is.
Objection is, this is beyond the scope of tonight's testimony, they had the opportunity to ask all questions with regard to that in the past, this is not going to be.
He did not testify with regard to depth of the property tonight?
He's changing, he's changing the dimensions of the property tonight.
Talking about the rear of the property. All right, so he'll reword it to rear, is that what you're talking about, the rear that was on question before?
That dimension, yeah, where do he get, he's showing that he, they agree now.
Will you go over there and tell them and show exactly what you're talking about?
They have agreed, not only Mr. Iannelli, but Mr. Gachion, in his letter to the council, agreed that they are approaching on the Morris Canal. Mr. Iannelli now has submitted to you that this is the portion that's on the Morris Canal.
Right.
I'm going to contend to you, and I have copies for all you members if you want to follow this with me, all right?
Wait, wait, then it's got to be put into evidence.
Right now, right now, we're just questioning, later, if you want to submit that.
And then, and then, and then he can come back and go back and forth.
So my contention is that he is in error with this.
That there's less or more on the Morris Canal.
There's more of his property on the Morris Canal, and I'm going to use his own plan and the survey that we just acknowledged that I'm referring to, that you showed me. Now, I asked him this dimension, what did you, he just testified that, it says, the survey says 240 feet, and the deed says 203 feet. I'm asking him, what dimension is he using here?
You misspoke, you, rights. Survey is 220 feet. Deed is 203 feet.
Exactly.
Correct.
So which of those two measurements did you use to calculate this point?
There is, it's based on 220 feet.
And, and that's wrong, that because, that's, what does the.
Are you going to allege that it's in conflict with the deed, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I have the deed with me, and I present, this is a deed dated 20th.
But you have to give that in testimony.
Right now, you.
There's rules of evidence.
You're questioning Mr. Iannelli, the public.
It's a question.
Technically, you're cross-examining him.
Which you can do, but, or you can submit evidence, direct evidence, soon, you know, at the appropriate time. Right now, you're just questioning him, you question, you ask him the question he answered.
He just stated, I'm going to ask him again.
We not agree with it, but he answered.
I'm going to ask him again for clarification, so you're all here. He just told me, tell me if I misheard you, that this dimension that you're using is 220 feet.
That's correct.
In order to come up with this.
20.
Thank you very much, then I can speak later on.
I believe Ms. Higgins had her name up.
Thank you. Can I come up?
Name and address, yes, please.
Mary Higgins, 148 Brighton Avenue, that's the abutting property to Mr. Iannelli. I just want to look at this. I noticed there's no footage marked here at all, which is quite confusing, can I see the survey that this was based on?
Sure.
There's no measurements on this at all.
It's a big.
Technically, it's, it's an exhibit, but.
But, but.
It'll be a little accurate.
The survey you're asking for?
Yes, very nice. Could you read what this says over here for the public and the board about this survey? Can you read it?
This survey was prepared without the benefit of a current title commitment report and subject to provenance restrictions and reasons that may be contained therein as reference on this plan.
Okay, thank you. All right, and can you read this over here too about the Morris Canal? All right, and, uh, can you read this over here too about the Morris Canal?
Objection.
No, I'm asking him a question, it's for the public.
The document speaks for itself, it's written down.
She had a right to ask him a question of what he wrote on it.
She can ask him about what he wrote on it.
I'm asking him to read it, because I...
Why does he have to read?
I'm asking him to read it for the benefit of the board and the public.
It's written.
It's written, but not for her, it's not written for them. They don't have this document. We do, but they don't. I overrule the objection. Go ahead, please.
Could you read, could you read number three?
Line of the Morris Canal shown is a plot based on meets and bounds and topographic. A survey of lots numbers 14 and 15 on block 698, sheets 82 on tax maps, sheet, uh, sheet numbers 138 to 144, Brighton Avenue for Brighton Gardens apartment, signed by George Pres, that's, uh, Prestisti. Land surveyor Rich Lyons, Lupo, Pres...
Cornesti.
Cornesti dated March 14th, 1991.
Okay, 1989. Could you read number four?
A written waiver in direction not to set, uh, corner markers has been obtained, uh, the ultimate user pursuant to the code.
Okay, does that mean that, um, the owner of the property requested not to have corner markers set?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Will you read this one?
This certification may be made only to below named parties for purchase and or mortgage of herein delineated property by the below named purchaser. No responsibility or liability is assumed for the use of the survey for any other purpose, including but not limited to the use of survey for survey affidavit, used for a, for basis of destruction, subject to easements and restrictions of record use for the basis of construction, subject to all easements, restrictions of record certified to Anthony Clander.
Okay, just have a little question. So, this survey is not to be used for intensive purposes of construction or, I believe, basis is an old German word in constr, in engineering, or digging.
Okay.
So, this, okay. So, this survey is not to be used for construction or digging, correct? It's only, the sole intent of this purpose of the survey is to be used for obtaining a mortgage or possibly an equity loan to the property, correct?
No. When we prepare engineering plans and survey plans, we put general notes on there so the survey is not used, again, copies are made, scans are made.
Did, did you prepare the survey?
No, I did not.
No, you didn't. Uh, so, you're actually presenting secondhand testimony?
No, I'm saying, what I just said to you was, engineering and surveying documents do use general notes. Very clear in my language.
Okay, so, these are general notes, but for all intents and purposes, this survey is not to be used for construction. True. That's what it says right there.
No, I said, I read it as it's not by the person other than who's named as a certified to. That's how I read it.
Okay, it's certified to Anthony Clander, correct?
Mr. Chairman, there's nothing that says we are using this survey for construction. If construction were taking place, there might be a different survey. There's no construction taking place at this site. The building is remaining as it is.
Construction is a little term, it also includes parking lot construction.
Well, I was gonna bring that up. Aren't we paving an additional area?
What I'm using is for construction of that building, and we don't know if when we do that paving, there won't be an additional survey. This is a zoning warrant application, not an application to the construction official for a building permit.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. In the back of the building, to the right, all the way to the right of the building, you have listed a whole bunch of parking stalls, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, isn't that considered construction because you are not, it's, right now, it's just regular land, open land? I don't know the terminology, I'm asking, doesn't that come under construction?
There's no permit being sought. This is a land use approval. These documents are for purposes of presenting a land use application. They're not code issues that are being handled before this board. And if you're interested in having the surveyor come up to the witness stand, I'd be happy to have him up after the questioning is finished or at this time.
So, you have the surveyor here?
I have him here.
From 1991?
From the current survey that was done.
Oh, I'm just saying because I'm hearing it says dated March 14th, 1991, in the section she's talking about. That's why it's, what?
That, that's a note that was put on there, and I'd be happy to have the surveyor explain what was done.
Okay. You're the architect.
I'm an engineer.
Engineer. All right, and maybe you would know this. She brought this up, so I have a question based upon what she brought up on cross-examination. And I don't know if you can answer it or the surveyor can answer.
Okay.
But in number four, it says there was a waiver in direction not to set cross marks, corner markers. What are corner markers for and why would there be a request for a waiver?
Mr. Chairman, I'd prefer to have the gentleman prepare the survey.
I'm okay, that's okay, but may I just do it? If he can't answer it, I'll let him answer. No problem.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Calandra requested it, not the land surveyor.
No, this is certified to Mr. Calandra, man.
All right.
On the bottom, it says certified Anthony Clan, to Anthony Clan, and that's what it says. Bottom, all the way to the bottom, see all the way to the bottom?
Okay, but it says that a written waiver in direction not to set corner markers has been obtained from the ultimate user, which would be Anthony Calandra. It was requested by him.
But he could answer the questions, right?
Yes.
He can't answer the questions, we're wasting time with that. So, wait until he comes up, then you can ask him. I just want to try and expedite the application, that's all.
Okay, I have another question. Is this survey based on a meets and bounds deeded survey?
Again, Mr. Chairman, if I'm gonna bring this survey or answer, let him answer.
Just survey, he's an engineer. He may have a license as a surveyor too, but apparently he didn't participate in that part.
Okay, then I have another question. All of these drawings and everything are actually a second step away from this. They're engineering drawings, but they're not based on an accurate survey used for a construction, correct?
Is there a question?
Well, I, I, well, let's ask the survey.
Okay.
Let's get to the survey. Want to bring up the survey?
Sure.
Any other questions for this applicant by members of the public? Yes, sir. Name and address, please, please come up.
Is he even a witness?
Who's a witness?
He's a witness.
Sit out. Oh, I'm sorry. What, um, member of the public? He's the witness.
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut Street. Mr. Ryan Elliott, um, Ryan Elliott, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Um, basically, boundaries and surveys are going to be used for providing footage, right? To be able to justify parking things of that nature. Um, so, I guess, I'd like to point out that when the surveyor gets here that you can actually, can actually ascertain that. But the, you spoke before about buffering up for drainage purposes. Where exactly would you be buffering up, raising...
No, no, I said, I said grading to ensure proper drainage.
What, what would you be grading in order to do that?
All we, all I was referring to was, if you look in this photo, if you ever walk behind the site, it's trapped water. It doesn't really go anywhere. When we remove the improvements...
The side meaning the Morris Canal or the side of the building?
The side of the building into the Morris Canal. When we have to take out the pavement in the Morris Canal, when we take out the pavement, we have to grade it to make sure it drains properly. Because when we...
Grading it, isn't that the difficulty, that it's been filled in rather than left naturally graded?
I can't go back in time. I have to remove the asphalt and then I have to grade it so it drains properly. I don't want trapped water. So, they're gonna make me remove the asphalt, which we agreed to do.
Right.
We then have to make sure it pitch properly so it doesn't stand standing water. That's all.
Okay, I'd like to ask that same question about the proposal for the side of the building that's being proposed to be, become parking and an exit.
Okay.
Um, there's very little curvaceous coverage on that property map.
Correct.
And you're proposing to remove that?
Yes.
Maple Avenue is quite deep back there. Uh, Maple Avenue has serious drainage problems.
Objection. Time for questions.
That's testimony.
Okay, sorry about that. So, then, if you were to pave over that area and create parking, there's many down steps that come down now from an engineering standpoint. You talk about still water, but isn't that absorption?
Uh, no, we were actually going to be putting in a pretty substantial, uh, underground infiltration that will pick up the water from the roof and from the parking area, so that off-site will have no impact from the additional pavement. Actually, the area will drain better.
So, you're going to pave over curvaceous surface and it's going to drain better?
It's gonna go into an underground infiltration basin, which will then...
It goes where?
Into the ground. It'll...
Straight down?
Percolate into the ground, right.
I mean, you're at the Morris Canal, I mean, look at this kind of title, natural buffer.
Can you, can you, you would explain what it answered, what, what answered the question? So, he knows what that is.
Yeah, could you explain that to us? We conducted testments out there, and we determined we have pretty good soil. When you get a little further back to the Morris Canal, it's actually pretty good sand. Uh, we can absolutely infiltrate, we have a very high percolate, so the water from the parking lot and the roof will be captured into this underground chamber.
On, on the existing property?
On the existing property.
And you have any example of representation of that?
A question. Not a flash.
Okay.
They're, they're commonly used in, in the industry. It's a very common, uh, means of dealing with stormwater management when you're looking to develop a site, especially when you have, uh, underlying soils that are very conducive in the perk wells. When I mean perk, I mean percolate.
I got, all I know is it's also flood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions at the witness? Yes, sir, name and address.
John Higgins, 102 East River Road, Rums, New Jersey.
Mr. Ryan Elliott, did you think of a first one to release the second one?
I don't know what to do with that. This is a survey, what is a survey?
To Higgins appearing in some capacity, I would ask, is he an attorney or...
Well, I think he's asking a question.
He doesn't live in this...
I have property interest in the store at the apartment.
I believe he, that's her brother.
And what, I ask you a question before you continue.
Let me explain something to you. I believe this property goes down to their parents, I believe he's a half owner.
Can I, can we get that information on the record? You had there the last time we saw it. I'm asking you again.
Go ahead, ask it.
Are you an owner of property in the S? And what property do you own?
48 Brighton Avenue, 150 Brighton Avenue.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan Elliott, in the living room apartment you're proposing on the south side of the property. Are you aware, if there's a high pressure gas line, that we're gonna risk it up there?
It's running along...
South side, the other side.
No, it's not, it's on the north side.
There's one there, oh, there's one on the other side also.
There is...
Right there.
Goes through the site?
Yep.
You, you're mistaken.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions at the witness, by members of the public? Didn't you already ask questions?
I could have.
You could ask from there, you don't have to go all the way out.
All right. Dr. East Ward, here again?
No.
All right, this is a question about the e-track. I believe that's in the back corner over here, and you said you tested the soil and the soil is pretty good.
E-track.
Well, you, you mentioned that previously. In fact, there's a, a seepage pit back there, right? All right, seepage pit right back there.
Seepage pit?
Seepage pit, right. And, um, you said the water would just go underground and percolate, correct?
That is correct.
Just because water goes underground doesn't mean that...
Objection.
Okay, okay.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Okay, I'm just asking...
I want to conclude this. Would you please explain how a seepage pit works, please?
Most of this area is not seepage pits. Uh, matter of fact, there's a seepage pit here, the road behind us, we walked the site with the DPW, we found that the road behind you goes into a seepage pit. Um, and this is, there's curvable soil. When you have underlying curvable soil, that's good sand, it'll not, groundwater, that's the, water percolates into the ground and it basically goes into the groundwater and is mitigated versus going into...
In a way, it dissipates.
It dissipates.
From the side.
Okay.
It dissipates, okay, thank you. Um, could you tell us the rise in elevation between Maple Avenue and the adjoining property of 148 Brighton Avenue?
Again, objection. That hasn't been testified to tonight.
That's, that's, that, we're talking about a seepage pit. We're not talking about the property or, or, or Maple.
Okay.
And if you have any information that you want to give as, as evidence, you can do that when there is the opening to the public for testimony. Okay? This is only questions based upon the testimony he has given, within reason.
Okay, within reason, so I just want to get this straight. The water, uh, the rainwater, the runoff from the cars in the parking lot, everything would go into that seepage pit and just go out underground, correct?
It currently goes into a seepage pit that's located on the north, as I testified to earlier.
Yes.
And we are proposing another one along the, uh, south side. It current, right now, it doesn't drain back there. The water goes into like low lying areas and percolates, so, we're basically mimicking what's going on. We're also proposing to, uh, reconstruct this because add seepage pits, you gotta clean it out. So, this seepage pit here, we're proposing as part of these improvements to excavate out those seepage pits and improve it. So, that's basically how a lot of areas drain when there's not storm piping in, in the vicinity. That's just the way it's done.
I don't know what I'm going to say as direct testimony, but I'd just like to show you...
Unless you're asking him a question, that's what it's gonna say.
I'm asking him a question. Are you aware of the water that seeps down there now and what it has done to retain it all?
Well, we are also, we are also proposing to fix it.
Now, are you aware of the water that has seeped there now and to retain it all?
I am not aware of the water affecting retaining the wall, um...
You answered the question.
Can I just...
Can you answer that question? Hold on, everybody's gotta stop to close the tape. Come on, it's going.
Okay, I...
Wait until she says herself, tell me. Okay, now it's okay.
All right, are you aware that the water, salt runoff gasoline goes into that seepage pit onto the retaining wall?
Oh, may have that retained.
No, no, that, that has to be introduced into evidence first. And then, Mr. Gashion, you call his experts to come and discuss it, am I correct, Mr. Gashion?
That's correct.
Okay, so, you're gonna have to wait that's testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Any exhibits, anything like that is testimony, okay?
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one additional question.
Go ahead, Mr. Fran Antonio.
Mr. Ryan Elliott, did you, when you did this, did you take into a slightly topography of stuff?
Of course we did.
You did.
Objection, Mr. Chairman.
Wait, 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 let me find out what his next question is, otherwise it's academic.
All right, you are claiming you're gonna have two seepage pits there. Is that what you said?
I, I said that we will have a chamber that will be seepage along the south side when we build a parking lot, and we will reconstruct the existing one that's on the north side.
So, there'll be two total on the property, am I correct?
Correct.
All right, that's what I said. Okay, the existing one, by the way, it's not a seepage pit, it's just a hole in the ground, but if you construct it as a legal seepage pit, uh, are you, and again, by the way, that's a question. When, are you familiar with topography of that north side of the property?
Mr. Chairman, I object.
He asked the face of the man you were with.
But this is, this is not what he testified to tonight. This seepage pit discussion has gone on and it was not, the idea of tonight's testimony, this is...
He brought up the seepage pit. Once you open up the door, I can't close it.
He didn't bring it up, he did not bring it up. It was, it was a question.
It was a question, and you answered it.
I object, it was your objection.
Mr. Fran Antonio, can we get to the point?
Yeah, the point is, he's brought up in response to a question where the water's gonna go. He says you're gonna have two seepage pits, which are gonna take all the runoff from the property.
You dispute that?
Well, because...
Do you dispute that? Answer my question.
Yes.
Then you will have to give expert testimony in some way.
Not now.
Not now, later. Later. Yes, sir.
Mr. Ryan Elliott, are you aware of any gross discrepancies on the survey?
Um, I would defer to the surveyor.
Are you aware of it?
He's referring to the surveyor, so, so he's not aware of it.
And in, in your, in your professional, in your opinion, are you aware of any discrepancies on the survey?
Objection. The surveyor is here to testify.
I said I would defer to the surveyor.
Okay, he refuses.
That usually means he's not aware. Okay. Well, that's what he means. He calls it a surveyor, so how, he doesn't know, he's leaving it to the survey.
Tell him what he means.
Okay. Now, is there anybody else? No one else? Okay, you may take a seat and you can call your surveyor, Mr. Fran Antonio.
Mr. Baker?
What's the point of order?
It's not even testing.
Could you raise your hand, right hand, please, with regard to this application, you're sort of testimony, you're about to be showing the truth, so...
I do.
State your name and spare your last name, please.
Scott Bleeker, B-L-E-D-K-R.
All right, Mr. Gashion, you can briefly qualify and then we move on.
Your business address?
Two hundred Fourth Acres Drive, Brooklyn, New York.
Your occupation?
Professional land surveyor.
By whom are you employed?
Duverd Engineers, Inc.
And can you tell us the, give us the benefit of your education?
I have a civil engineering degree from Dirge Institute of Technology. I've always since as a professional land surveyor for approximately twenty-five years.
And could you briefly give the board the benefit of some of your experience?
I've been familiar with Morris Canal properties. I've done survey work throughout many municipalities, Woodland Park. Currently, right now, doing one in Independence Township in Mansfield where the actual Morris Canal is the current border. It still does exist.
That's satisfied. Go ahead.
Is accepted as an expert in the field of surveying?
Yes.
Mr. Bleeker, can you just briefly review what you did in order to produce the survey question? And if you can recall some of the questions that were asked of Mr. Ryanelli, possibly answer them as you review what you did to prepare that survey.
Now, we're talking about the 2015 surveys and last.
That's correct. The current survey.
Well, the current survey has to exist with an exhaustive amount of actual fieldwork, deed research, title searches, things of that nature. Some of the questions that she arose as far as some of this terminology over here, this is just boilerplate terminology that we put on. So someone's not going to take a tape measure or a scale, measure off the building and use that to construct a fence. We didn't actually put stakes in it. I have not demarcated the corners. That's why the corner marker waiver note is on the plan. Mr. Colander didn't order them at the time the survey was done. So therefore, I do not want someone taking this survey, using these dimensions and going ahead and taking it upon themselves to construct anything using those numbers. That's what that number, that note was there for. Simple boilerplate to protect this liability wise, because we did not establish the corners. I don't know of any other questions I can recall.
When you prepared this survey, would you review the discrepancy with deed distances and occupation line and whatever else you used to determine the location of the lines in question and how you produced that survey?
So as you can see, the occupation lines in most cases are outside the actual bounds of meets and bounds of the property. However, we do have some cases where we have hard numbers for deed and information. Other places we have plus or minus. During the places that we have the plus or minus, we're left to decide upon ourselves to hold course over distance. Survey law simply states in the state of New Jersey that any plus or minus distance on a river or on a stream or on a undefined boundary such as the Morris Canal or undetermined entity whatsoever, you have to continue the course in bearing, travel till you hit the actual intersection of these other lines that match the possession lines of the property. So that's the normal way to resolve a boundary when you do not have hard numbers. Unfortunately, the deeds we have hard numbers for, we adjust the whole information to it. And we are left to basically just piece this together by extending this line straight out, given the bearing, even though it says two oh three, plus or minus, that number has no meaning in reality. It's the bearing that matters. So you follow this course till it intersects these two lines and that's how we resolve the boundaries of the Morris Canal on this property. On another property, it would be something completely different. But that's how surveys work. And when you have plus or minus dimensions, you have no idea. It could be twenty feet, it could be fifty feet, it could be sixty. And currently, I'm doing the job right now in Mansfield, Independence Township, where the town line actually lands in the Morris Canal, which is still there. It says to the Morris Canal. Is it to the center of the Morris Canal? Is it to the toll path? Is it to the right side, left side, north side, south side? It's left, up, for ups to actually determine that. And that's something that's not very easy. So we have to look through all the pieces of information and this is the best fit solution we can come up with. I have reviewed it with the township engineer and surveyor as well. And him and I conferred and we agreed this is probably the best solution. And there's nothing really more I can do to resolve it any better other than survey the entire Morris Canal throughout all Belleville. And that would be a monumental difficulty.
Is it not accurate to say that the issues of the line of Morris Canal have been difficult to determine throughout the area of this tract?
They are, they're throughout every area. Because it's not indicative to Belleville. It could be any town that the Morris Canal travels through. And there's many areas where you have numerous approaches that go through and we try to ascertain who owns it. Belleville's asserted their rights to the Morris Canal where Woodland Park and other areas just gave up the area to all the adjacent property owners. There's certain areas that they protect it, certain areas they don't. And it's also involved with the Morris River Walk, which actually goes through all of City of Little, Township of Little Falls, all the way through to Cedar Grove. And that's actually preferred space that's now a walking path, running path, and they did a nice job on that years ago.
So the Morris Canal is treated differently depending upon.
Depending on the municipality. Also depending on if there's grant money involved, if they actually make it into a park, can it be, you know, donate to green acres. There's so many, there's so many different avenues that the Morris Canal's been dispensed with in my career.
No further questions, little witness.
Before you get up, please, Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Do you concur with the statement he made about you and him getting together that this is the best use to determine?
Yes.
Okay. Now, any member has a question? No. Okay. Member of the public. Name an address, Jim. Always, every time you come up.
102 East River Road, New Jersey. We're all just a little confused. Could you explain that the Morris Canal did not exist? Could we do an accurate survey of the meetings?
If the Morris Canal does not.
I suspect the Morris Canal is somebody else's backyard.
Well, one at a time, please.
It doesn't.
Could you do an accurate survey without referencing the Morris Canal?
Yeah, actually, what we can do is extinguish it and extend over these lines till they meet and we're done.
Okay, you have calculated lines under survey, correct?
Yes.
Why don't you have actual lines under survey?
Sixteen?
Actual lines, all the deeds. Why don't you have actual?
This ends right here, two oh three is a deed.
No, why don't you have the other? The lines in the back of your survey say calculated.
Excuse me, can you do a kind of same? Are you a surveyor?
No.
Are you, do you have a license to answer very with you to refute what I've done?
No, but in my profession, I question many people throughout my career. Okay, I've had.
It gets a little frustrating here trying to explain how the amount of time you put in to actually get this done is quite daunting.
We did some sketchups here. Which are the original. The original, did you refer to the original tax map when you did your calculations for square?
No, I referred to the deeds.
You referred to all the deeds?
Yes. All the deeds that pertain to this property, yes.
Every single deed?
And you join yourself.
And you got these deeds from Mr. Colander or did you?
Objection. What relevance does that have?
What he's asking?
No, I can answer it. We've required action title research, abstract and Rutherford name toll deeds force. As is customary. They're all from the courts.
All from the courts. Okay, so you made every reasonable effort of paying all information.
Yes.
Any other question?
Do you believe that your survey is accurate?
I believe it's the best possible solution.
The best possible solution, but you do not believe. Do you believe the survey is accurate to the?
He already answered that question.
I would have signed it sooner if you did.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Come on up. Name an address.
Mr. Fred Antoni. Sorry, I forgot your name.
Mr. Bleeker.
Mr. Bleeker, you just answered this gentleman's question by saying the two hundred and three feet you got from the deed. Is that correct?
Plus or minus, yes.
Plus or minus. When we say plus or minus, you call it inches?
No, you can talk feet.
Feet, more or less. But the deed says two hundred and three feet.
Right.
Now, the original is two properties. Did you get both deeds?
Yes.
All right. Both deeds said that common property line was two hundred and three feet.
One of them actually said at one point a hundred eighty-nine. Then there was another one said two twenty. It was something ambiguity, the son of a deed. But the deed that we have for that property says two oh three, plus or minus, to the Morris Canal. See, again, when you hear of meets and bounds, the meets is the bearing. The bounds is where you're going to. So if there's an oak tree, that's the bounds. So when you hear of meets and bounds, that's what I mean. The bounds was to the Morris Canal. This is what we're determining is the Morris Canal's actual line.
Two hundred and three feet.
No, two hundred and twenty point forty-four.
Is this the deed?
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus?
Plus or minus.
Does this look familiar?
More or less. It doesn't say two oh three.
Two hundred and three feet, more or less?
So to give you an idea where to look for the line or for the monitoring.
Would you say?
It actually maps out.
You're acknowledging the deed says two hundred and three feet.
Objection, Mr. Chairman. He said that numerous times. Explain how it says more or less and how it goes to the boundary of the Morris Canal. He's answered the question.
He agreed.
Just from my standpoint, we're spending an extraordinary amount of time on this issue. I think we should move on.
Well, in fairness, we're spending an extraordinary amount of time because there was ever that the.
Mr. Fred Antoni, would you please give that as testimony later?
Yeah.
I do not want to tie up this case any longer.
The citizens of public this year is brevetious.
We're only here to ask questions, not to give testimony. The testimony, you can talk to later.
We have Mr. Bleeker and Mr. Harris.
Anyone else have a question of the witness by the public? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, it's a simple question. Could the owner use this survey to sell the property?
No, usually when you have a sale, we find the new, the higher one and use it also.
What about the title company?
Usually whenever you have a title transaction, I think you could answer that.
Jim, what relevance does this have to his only application?
It's the authenticity of the survey. It's a simple question. Could he use this to sell his property?
Yes or no?
He said he's the expert.
The answer is yes, answered.
Well, first you said no, now you say yes.
No, I'm not saying he can definitely use the survey if he wants, in any capacity he wants.
In any capacity he wants. So see, so that's a yes, that he could use this survey to sell the property. It's accurate enough.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question, little witness?
One more question. Using that survey to sell a property, objection.
No, no, no. We're not selling the property.
That a title company would accept it.
Sir, sir, that is not the issue here. He's not selling the property.
It's the accuracy of the survey.
He already said he could use it. That's it. That's all. We're going to go.
Well, I could use anything.
Well, then, sir.
I could sell the broken bid.
Sir.
But then why are we here?
Don't be difficult.
I don't get it.
The accuracy of the survey is very important.
No, you got to take a seat, sir. That is not an act, that is not a proper question. Okay, now, do you have any other witnesses?
I do not.
Okay. Want to take a break? We want to disrupt the public. Take a break. There will be a ten minute recess. We'll now return from recess and we will continue with ZB two thousand and fourteen dash oh eight Brighton Avenue. However, before we continue, I understand there is two cases that wish to, that wish to adjourn to the next meeting. Mr. Gashion, I believe you had one?
I do. Two seventy-four, two seventy-six Belleville Avenue, ZB two oh one five dash fifty. I'd like adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board if I could.
Okay, so adjourn, ZB two thousand and fifteen dash fifteen, two seventy-four, two seventy-six Belleville Avenue. There will be no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper for this case. That's adjourned to October first, two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yes, sir?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Joe Sardell from McRoy, Duarte, Levania, Patrider, on behalf of applicant two fifty-eight two sixty, Washington LLC, application number ZB two thousand and fifteen dash eleven.
Yes, that was started, but it was stopped after one witness, if I remember correctly.
Correct, Chairman.
At the last meeting.
We start with our architect and now need to present our engineering planner.
Okay, so you're going to adjourn to next month also?
Yes, Chairman.
October first. That will be to October first, two thousand and fifteen. There will be no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper. And in the event we finish this case tonight, you will be the first on the agenda.
I appreciate that, Chairman. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, board.
Okay, Mr. Gashion, you're not next. Have a question?
Is it time for public discussion?
Oh.
I've done.
Yes, you may talk. Name an address in the front.
Mary Higgins.
We have to have you reported, so I'm in the front. And before we go on, I want to explain something for the public. There will be no repetitiveness. Whatever one witness says, the most you could say is I agree with what the former gentleman said or the poor lady said. Okay? No repetitiveness. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mary Higgins, welcome to Brighton Avenue. Good evening. We again would like to publicly thank those board members who made an extraordinary effort to investigate the inconsistencies and discrepancies of this application. We also thank the webmaster, Mr. Sheldon of the Bellevue Township website for painstakingly putting, making available to the public all documents, surveys, and plans related to this case. We also would like to thank Michelle Quick for the outstanding job of providing timely cross-index transcripts, also posted on the Bellevue website, along with videos of the zoning board procedures. At this point, we would like to ask for an adjournment to research primary sources because of the inconsistencies, errors of omission and commission, and contradictions in the application. Thank you.
Well, what do you, wait, 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 wait.
We would like to ask for an adjournment for research.
There's already been research done on this.
We haven't included our research.
Well, this has been going on for months.
I know, but we've never asked for an adjournment before.
That's true, but technically, there is nothing that I could see that's concrete enough to have an adjournment, to be honest. You have to have a specific reason.
I can offer one.
Well, I, I can offer one. Can I offer one? All right? For example, from the beginning of the application, there's inconsistencies. For example, it said zoning board application number 221 on behalf of applicant Luciano Calander approved January 7th, 1969 for an apartment complex. We happened to find an article from January 30th, 1969 in the Bellevue Times that said Mr. Riccianno owned the property. Also, on the deed, it said that Luciano Calander and Ortenza Calander did not get the property until May 15th of 1970. So it seems that everything on this application is a contradiction. We would just need more time to research the primary sources.
I will refer to our attorney.
Why don't we just continue with the public comments and the board to take action on the request from Mrs. Higgins?
So are you denying our request for an adjournment?
Wait, yes, Mr. Villal.
So, just for the record sake, if you did get an adjourn, you're asking for one month, two years?
Yes, one month.
I just want to, on the record, that's all. I want to do it the, the position.
Yes, thank you.
What would you hope to accomplish within a month or so?
Well, we would have to research primary sources in the Hall of Records in York. We would have to research records at the state level.
For what?
For what? For example, the oil tanks buried under the parking lot. There were no EPA regulations at the time this building was constructed. The woods, two houses that were there, and everything was bulldozed over in eight hours. And that's why the parking lot is breaking up into sinkholes in the back. And there's erosion four feet down the discrepancy line into Maple Avenue and also into our property. There's a lot of EPA regulations we want to look into. We want to file OPA reports also for the number of school-aged children who inhabit the building. We want to also supplement the...
That would be a zoning issue, though.
Well, well, no, because Mr. Calander said there were no school-aged children in the building.
But that's still not an issue. That, that's not, that's not an issue of the application.
Okay, but there's several more that you don't want to...
This application started 10 months ago, and you've had ample opportunity...
No, the application started a year ago.
Yeah. You've had ample opportunity during that time to obtain the services of an attorney, of whatever other witness you wanted. I've not heard, I've not been involved in this situation, and I've been involved in many cases where during the closing, objectors who have had nine months of hearings, 10 months of hearings, have asked for an adjournment. It, it's, to me, it's...
Excuse me?
It's an unnecessary delay, but I don't make the call.
Can I, can I say something? Let's go back to October. We couldn't get the application until November, all right? I filled out an OPA report. I was denied the OPA report, something to do with the Homeland Securities Act. We finally received it and some, the application from Mr. Di Lorenzo. We were denied that information until November, so we couldn't start researching or asking questions. We came in here and heard the witnesses, but we had nothing to refer to. I mean, it was like they could make it up as they were going along. We didn't have access to the survey. We didn't have access to these, all these variance and waivers they want, including AD variance, which would put us at a crossroads in the history of Bellevue to approve basement apartments, all right? That's very serious. So, we're at, because, and then there were the adjournments by Mr. Gachion. The first one was that he didn't have the expert witness, just, they're trying to say the basement apartments aren't really basement apartments. The second adjournment was, I believe, Mr. Calander was in the hospital. Third adjournment, just went on.
Objection, Jim. This is just cluttering.
So every time there was an adjournment, they came back with different plans. So you're saying we had the time since last October to do research? No, we didn't, because every time they come back, they come back with different plans and here's all these different plans tonight. Without the benefits of measurement.
Your group of has had a year to do what you need to do.
Gordon?
Well, to be honest, to be honest, I, I had two meetings with Mr. Haritz and Mr. Mafucci and Mr. Sheldon, because they hadn't went and looked at the property. And then I went and looked at the property. And then we had meetings over the new plans. And I invited Mr. Frantoni, so that way we could cut through the chase of all this. And the last meeting, I even invited you, but he came and you didn't.
I wasn't informed of it.
It was to avoid the delay of this case. But it was to avoid the delay of this case. And, and Mr. Haritz did a lot of work. I had him go and check all the deeds, which he did. And as the testimony was tonight, both of the members, both his surveyor and Mr. Haritz, agreed on this last survey. They agreed on it, okay? And I, and they're the two experts. I'm not a surveyor, but I got the town surveyor or a town engineer and his surveyor, or, well, actually, he had the plans. We didn't have him witness, to agree on this. He said this is all right. So I have to go by our own expert as far as that's concerned.
Thank you.
And it was, and it was to avoid taking up an hour or two of our time here, because we have other cases we have to work on. And tonight, this is the only case you're working on because of all the time it's taken.
All the time is taken because of the discrepancies. Every time we came here, the survey changed. It's not only the survey, it's the 17 variances, waivers, and easements they're also asking for.
Well, those things, you could, you could...
We have to research the primary resources.
You could work that on an individual basis, on each waiver that's asked and everything, if you don't agree with one of them, or, or, or all of them. But the thing is, it has to be addressed by you. Now, if you just want to address it, I have no problem, okay? But I want to get on with this case.
But we need more, we're asked...
As we said, October was a year ago. Now, if the board wants to give you to the next meeting, I will not overrule the board. The board can overrule me, okay? It's up to the board. What is the final decision? All right? But I would like to at least you give testimony tonight of what you're arguing about, so that way I don't need another adjournment next month for Mr. Gachion, because now he wants to get an expert to refute your testimony. I, I want to get this all done at one time, finally. This is the longest, I've been on this board for 23 years at least. The last 12 or 13 is adjourned, and this is the longest case I've ever had in my life.
And why is that?
And I think Mr. Villal will agree, because he's been on the board just as long as me.
And, and why is that?
Because it keeps on going back and forth, and there was discrepancies, and then there's new plans and everything. And there's a lot of people in the public that, that are interested in the case, a number of reasons. But this is a long case to be going. I'll admit, in the last year, there was a couple of months when nothing happened, because new plans had to be made and everything else. That'll, I won't argue the case. But this has been a long application, and I would like to get it over with, hopefully, tonight. But if you want more time and the board agrees to it, I will not argue the case. But I think it should be done tonight, if at all possible.
Well, I, I would argue that there were many irregularities from the beginning.
As far as the law, forget about the law. The law, we've gone through so, so much, it isn't funny.
No, I'm just...
So I think you should, you should talk about the amount of units, whatever you want to discuss.
Yes, that term's still answered for an adjournment.
Stuff like that, but as for the law itself, I think...
We haven't asked for an adjournment. They've been granted four or five adjournments. There have been irregularities in this from the beginning, which have delayed us looking into primary resources, researching exactly what ordinance is being...
The thing is, objectors do not, do not start their case when the applicant concludes their case. You, you, if you are going to be an organized objector to an application, you start from day one, follow along in the hearings, get your own witnesses, you don't wait till the case is over, and then for the first time say, you know, we have to look at primary sources. This, this application is a normal...
Are you saying the case is over?
Wait, 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 Mr. Villal wants to say something.
Are you saying the case is over?
Hold it, hold it, hold it. No, it's not over. You still have your testimony.
No.
Mr. Ray...
Mr. Gachion is done. He's done with his case.
Mr. Villal?
I, I hear what you're saying, and I don't necessarily agree with your statement. And what your statement was, that, you know, they shouldn't have been presenting their evidence all that. This gentleman, as well as you, has been saying all this long, that, you know, this is not the time to present your evidence. You'll get a chance. Now, please, don't say that. That's not totally correct.
No, this is the time.
And, and I remember, and I remember...
I'm just telling you that...
And I remember at the last meeting, she brought the same thing up.
Right, so I'm just saying to you...
And I think if I could remember...
I, I don't want to be, listen, nobody wants to get this reported more than I do, you know? But my point is, I don't want to present the position of the court saying that we believe they were given all these other cases, all those other hearings, to present their evidence. They were not. I mean, this court has told them, Mr. Chairman, and Detective...
I agree with you.
That you said, "This is not the time." I don't want to adjourn immediately, and I don't want that to be a, a statement on the record either. Respect me, Mr. Ray, though. I don't mean, you know, I don't mean...
And, and, and if I remember correctly, because I, I looked at the video last month, she asked this question, and I says, "I understand you've never asked for an adjournment. If you asked for one, I would have given it to you, because I gave it to someone."
So candidly speaking, and I'll be, I'll say it to the audience as well, I have enough data to make a, a decision in my head. I'm not going to tell you, I'm, I'm going to say I'm, I'm 90-plus percent, I have enough data. Now, I've been doing this for 25-plus years as well. But, you know, I don't, you know, I don't want to seem like that we gave them the opportunity, with respect, Mr. Chairman, we did not.
Oh, I agree.
That's all what I'm saying.
Because technically, the, the, the...
We kept on saying...
Public, the public has to give testimony at the end.
Right.
Now, I'm giving them an opportunity to give testimony.
Right, that's what I was...
And if there's any problem with this, okay? And if the board has no problem with them coming back, I have no problem. It also would give Mr. Gachion the opportunity to refute any testimony they give tonight. But it's up to the board. But the thing is, the board feels they've had enough testimony, you know? The board is ready to make a decision. That's up to them. But we have to hear your testimony first. So just asking for an adjournment right off the bat isn't proper.
I'm not asking for an adjournment right off the bat, because last time, we were ready to present our testimony, but then you told us not to, because they were going to present new plans. Therefore, our testimony changed...
Well, that's because, that's because we never heard the case. He came up and asked for an adjournment because the plans were being brought. And the reason I didn't, I told you, and, and it's on, it's on video, the reason I said that I didn't want to hear your testimony at that time was because then he would give new testimony, then you would have to come back. We would be going over and over again. So why don't you just give your testimony tonight? And if there is a problem still at the end, then we'll, then we'll discuss it.
Okay, but...
Is that, is that reasonable?
Could you see how our testimony could change based on the changes here tonight?
The changes here tonight were very minor, very minor.
They're very minor.
Very minor, because all he's saying, which was said all along, and, and if you remember, the way it was, the reason it was adjourned last month was because he was looking to get a lease from the town. Town denied the lease, so he had to stay with what he had. And we already, we already discussed that part of that property he could not use, and that's why he went to the town. So that's, there's nothing new here.
Now's the time to present the comments or the book.
Yes. So, Ms. Higgins, do you want to give testimony? You want, you want to defer to your brother? Because your brother looks like he's ready to get up.
Okay, you know, I would like an adjournment, because we have a couple of neighbors who are not here tonight.
Ma'am, I can't handle that, because neighbors don't show up.
Well, in addition to all the other reasons.
Well, ma'am, you're going to have to give more reasons, but let's see what is said tonight first.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going to waste another hour and a half or, or, or more, because it's a simple reason, nothing's being said, after I adjourned two of the cases. Go ahead, sir. Name and address, please.
John Higgins, Elizabeth, New Jersey. Does the board have a copy of the letter from Robert Gachion to the Bellevue Township manager?
No.
I would like to present that as evidence.
You may.
Does the board have a copy of the New Jersey miscreant code titled 13 Shepherd State Board of Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors? I'd like to present that as evidence. Does the board have a copy of deed book 4343 pages...
Do you have all this, what you said?
And 373...
I'm sorry, you, you'll have to repeat that, because when he said something, I missed the numbers.
What's your point?
Repeat that question.
As a reference on the survey...
Start that sentence, I want to...
Copy of the deed book...
Thank you.
43, 43 pages, 372 and 373. Date is May 15th, 1970. Transferring the deed from Francis G. Riccianno to Luciano Calander to Ortenza Calander. Does the board have a copy of deed book page 4351? Pages 871 and 872.
Can we get through this simply? Do you want to present that as evidence?
Can I take a look?
That's all you have with them. You want to look at it, Mr. Gachion? You can look at it.
Mr. Gachion has the right to look at them.
Yes, he does.
01?
Before you put them into evidence.
01.
01, yes. Any files, Mr. Gachion?
I just want, Mr. Gachion. The, uh, item B is a document that's been marked up, it appears to be, by the applicant, by the objector.
Oh, let me see. I'll let the attorney see, we'll look at it. We have a, a board member for, for, for item 01. This is it? The one on the top is what you're talking about?
No, the second, the colored item.
This is it.
Well, I hadn't opened to that page.
Mr. Higgins, what's the purpose of your submitting this?
The purpose of submitting this is for record, in case we need to think this is a pretty poor...
What do you mean for record?
For the record. I want the board to be aware that there's a major discrepancy on the property lines.
Okay. All right, since you're submitting this as testimony, I got to ask a question. I can ask one question. Where did this come from?
Like, that's a copy.
Of where? Of what?
Which one? That's a copy of the original deed. The original, uh, plan, plan, site plan.
Of this property? A deed book. This is from the deed book.
Well, the deed, the deed books are from New York, Hall of Records.
Well, that's what I was asking. This is a one about... Okay, we don't have a care about...
And what is the purpose of the administrative code?
Um, there were several items that were on the survey that were not adhered to administrative code. I believe should be questioned.
Mr. Gachion, as you know, this is not a court of law. The, you know, boards are a little bit more liberal in accepting documents or evidence.
I have no problem with any document, except the one I brought in.
I'm going to suggest to the board that we accept this as 01 and give it the weight which it's entitled to. I have a major concern with a, with a map with colored lines on it, when we've had no testimony about it from an expert, but let's just take it and, and, handle it that way.
As to all documents, I have no objection, except the map with the colored lines.
I understand. I think the board can, can, they're, they're at around that.
Look, I do have a question.
Hey, you want to read this, Mr. Villal?
I have a question.
Yeah. All right, yeah, mark it.
Is there going to be any, you want to point out what I'm submitting?
Yeah, I, I would just say, he submitted it, he's not an expert, it is what it is. That's why I said, let's give it the weight that it's entitled to. And I ask, Mr. Chairman, if there, if we could get a copy of what's been entered?
Of course. We can get a copy, just like they got it. Hold on. Um, Mr. Haritz, do you want to read this, this, this one page that Mr. Gachion is questioning? Because I'll be honest with you, I'd like you to tell me if you can tell what this is, because he's claiming that this is from Hall of Records. That's why I'm asking the question. The one that's on my side.
It's a copy.
It says deed book. It says deed.
It's a copy. No seal on it.
All right, why don't we move on?
Is he done?
Are you, are you, is there anything else you want to say, sir? Yes. I know. Well, we can, we can look at it while they're testifying.
It's Lee.
You're done?
I'm done.
Okay, please. Uh, I'm going to give her a chance. She hasn't talked at all tonight.
No, I haven't.
Name and address, please. I like to be fair.
My name is Rose, it's Bellevue, T P L L 1, 133, Park Avenue, New Jersey. My problem is, let's destroy it. The proposed driveway. This is a picture of...
Whoa, 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 whoa. Let, let's, let me, let me swear you in first.
Yes.
And if you have exhibits, we can mark them.
Yes.
Do you raise your right hand, please?
Yes, absolutely.
With regard to this matter, you swear that the comments that you're about to make show you the truth.
Yes, sir.
And you've already stated your name and said your last name. Now, what, what do you have in your hand?
I have an aerial picture of the curve, of course, from the proposed driveway that's right in front of my home.
And when was that taken?
This was taken, hold on. Put the eyes on. It's July.
July of, of 2016? Okay. And...
You can have it.
How did you obtain it?
Um, one of my friends had gotten it for me, because they used a drone.
All right. A drone, a drone.
That's the...
All right. Why don't we, why don't we mark that, uh, 02? Now, you see that before it's... Sure. Show him, Mr. Gachion.
This is...
And show him where you live.
My home is in this is the driveway, proposed driveway.
I believe, Mr. Gachion, it's a wonderful, it's a good game. I mean, it's a blow-up.
Thank you, members of the board, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this matter. It's been held on since October 2014. We refer for Mr. Calander's, his attorneys, his engineers, and his planners. Now it's our time to make a statement on his plans. I have a question on several occasions about this proposed driveway. I was told numerous amount of times that this driveway is in no way a dangerous, in a dangerous situation for our neighbors, our homes, and our children. That the last time we reached here, it was an engineer that said that it would be no different if there were two, two family homes with driveways for this proposed, uh, apartment building is. I disagree.